Okay, it is 6 o'clock on March 17th. That will open the West Bridgewater Board of Selectment's meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will be conducted remotely. Parties interested in addressing the board during the public hearing are asked to email Confidential Secretary Lorna J. Carroll at lcarroll, that's with two L's, at westbridgewater.com for instructions on joining the remote meeting. Additional public comments regarding non-public hearing agenda items will be recognized at the discretion of the chairman. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. Additionally, a recording of the meeting will be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Video On Demand website Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands. Okay, although we are in open session now, I am going to entertain a motion to enter into executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter into an executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease, or value of real property. Considering its options in purchasing a property and disclosure of this property at this point, in my opinion as chair, would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. The board will return to open session at the conclusion of executive session. It will conclude executive session by 6:30 as posted on the agenda. Please note that this is an estimate only. Roll call vote, is there a second? Is there a motion?
So moved, Anderson.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Raise yes, we will enter into executive session. In session, Ben, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. All right, it is 6:30. We have public hearings, so I will read this notice. Pursuant to Chapter 138 and Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be conducted remotely on Wednesday, March 17th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectment Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, on the application for a new all-alcohol on-premise liquor license for Maria Almeida DBA Daybreak Family Restaurant at 337 West Center Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. Interested parties are asked to email Confidential Secretary Lorna J. Carroll at lcarroll, that's with two L's, at wbridgewater.com for instructions on joining the remote meeting to address the board during the public hearing. Board of Selectmen Denise Irae, Chairman. Okay, 6:30 is the application for a new all-alcohol on-premise liquor license for Maria Almeida. Who is present for this hearing?
So that would be Gabriel.
Gabriel. Gabriel on.
He'll just have to unmute himself, he's with him.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Kenahan, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Okay, David, do you want to present a little of this to us? I think you said Gabriel is on.
Yes, I'm letting him know to unmute himself right now.
Yeah, so basically, this is a restaurant that has historically been open for breakfast and lunch. We have one all-alcohol license available throughout the entire town. They are looking for an all-alcohol. They are going to now begin serve, as a result of this, they would serve dinner. They would be open Monday through Saturday till 9:00 PM and Sunday until 9:00 PM as well. The police department has done their background. Well, at this point, if we could, is, uh...
Gabriel and Almeida, he is on mute. And Gabriel, you can address the board if you'd like.
Can I say something? Yeah. Right. I don't, basically, we're trying to still... During this COVID, we got hit very hard and we're basically trying to increase our business so we can survive even more versus what things, the way they're going. And it is something that we're interested to do right now. And if you guys, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so basically, we're just trying to, you know, increase our business more and to extend our serving dinner and serving some alcohol in our location. And because we're just trying to survive through this pandemic time to have more business so we can stay open. And that's basically mostly what we're looking for.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I do not have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions either.
Okay. Would the hours of operation change at all?
Yes.
No, it did, uh, 5:30, 5:30 to 9:00 o'clock.
Will be the hours you guys mentioned and will be at 10:00 PM, so 5:30 to 9:00 PM.
Okay. And would liquor be served outside as well, on the patio?
That is correct, yes.
Just understand, alcohol being served outside. So, that is allowed as of right now because of the, under the pandemic, there has been a loosening of some of the rules. But in order to do that long term, we're either, I believe you could either have to get a variance for the ZPA or we're gonna have to do a bylaw change at town sometime later. I'm not sure which, but right now, you're going to be fine to do that. My, in speaking to the governor last week about this, I expect that they want to try to keep this enforced for about one more year to give municipalities an opportunity to be able to either do zoning changes or just to set up that you can get a variance through the ZPA. But just letting you know, there'll be some other function that you may have to do at a later date in order to do outdoor alcohol.
Yes, correct, yes, we understand that. I was aware.
Okay.
They are working with the building department and they have started that process.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone who's called in? Because I can't see that part of the screen. So I don't know if there is anyone on.
So I know there were a few individuals who joined. I haven't... Questions via chat.
Okay.
Like they were instructed to do so. So if there's anyone who would like to address the board regarding the public hearing, please send me a chat and we will address each question as we receive them. This is your opportunity.
Okay, so let's just give them a minute to respond. Someone's raised their hand, I believe. Yes. Kevin Smith?
Kevin Smith, you could address the board if you'd like.
I just can't find, I don't have a chat button on my...
Okay, could you tell us your name and address, please?
Sure, Kevin Smith, 130 Prospect Street. I live behind, sort of, behind the new dentist office. I have no objections. I'm, uh, looks like a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Don't think we have anyone else?
No, I think that's...
Okay.
...the individual who joined.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Kenahan, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Thank you and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to visiting.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. We have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second? Okay, all, just a quick question, David, the 6:40, that's not part of the public hearing?
No. It is not.
Okay, all right, there's a second, all those in favor?
Kenahan, yes.
Raise yes. Okay, 6:40, application for transit vendor hawkers and peddlers license for Keith Lambert, New England Novelty Ford, South Main Street. This will be on April 3rd and April 4th and also on May 8th and 9th.
So Mr. Lambert does do this on an annual basis. We have a transit and vendor process and policy. To my knowledge and understanding is that he has followed that, he has paid or is, who will pay the appropriate fee. He will be looking for, on those dates, those plants and baskets in the center of town parking lot. So Lambert is here, if he would like to address the board.
Is this actually a public hearing? Do we have to open this?
It is not a public hearing.
Okay.
Keith, it looks like you have your hand raised, if you could just...
One is just...
Okay.
And I did receive an email about the public hearing.
And you received an email from someone about the previous public hearing?
Yes.
So, do we want to get through Keith and then go back to that? Okay.
So I did let Keith know that he needs to unmute himself.
So Keith, there'll be a little microphone on the bottom if you just hit the, you have that icon, or we can hear you.
Maybe I can try to give him the phone call. Let me find his phone number. Yeah, he's back with video, but not audio.
Now his microphone is still off.
There you are, now we can hear you, Keith. Thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me? Yeah, it was, no, no problem, thank you. It was muted and it said that I had to change a setting in the Gmail account, but I had to restart my Gmail. Yeah, basically, what I do is we just, we set up our little display in, at Center Plaza there and we sell the, you know, the flowers, baskets, and plants for Easter weekend and Mother's Day weekend. There've been, no issues with tenants, actually, the new landlord wanted to check with them. We get along great with the people in the Plaza and, you know, a lot of people in town enjoy that we're there so they don't have to wait in lines or, you know, maybe not get anything at other places. It's a pretty convenience for most people.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
As someone who likes to receive flowers, I'm happy for the convenience.
No questions, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Uh, David?
The only one thing I want to make clear is that the application says flowers, plants, and baskets, so that's what will be allowed and nothing else.
Correct, yep. That'll be all.
So I like all three, we're okay with that. We have a motion and a second, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Kenahan, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Good luck to you, Keith, hope you have great weather for this.
Thank you, yes, I hope so too. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Miller, I believe.
Yes, so he joined. He is the gentleman who sent me like the email with some concerns. So if you're okay with it, if you wanted to...
Yes.
Okay, if you unmute yourself, you can address the board I'll wait if you like.
Okay, just say, I can say who it's from and his address.
So it was from Jay Miller. He resides at 331 West Center Street. He said that, I'll just read word for word, it is pretty lengthy. "Just in general, I'm sure they try to run a good business, well-managed operation. I just don't like the idea of an all-alcohol license next door. We have one about 100 yards down the street at the old Chili Heads and also one about 300 yards west at the All Seasons Restaurant, not to mention package stores, more or less at either end of the block. So I think there's a certain saturation effect which might not make them successful anyways. Nothing personal, I just don't think any resident would be in favor of having an alcohol licensed facility next to their home, including any of the three selectmen. More specific concern would be the prospect of patrons accessing the backyard patio area. We were okay with them creating that space over the summer since no doubt restaurants are all struggling in the pandemic, even if the access path by our side of the boundary got a bit close. There's a difference between folks strolling out there for breakfast and heading in or out for partying, however. It's the lack of side space. The stockade fence that was only torn down by them last fall served a dual purpose, not just ensuring some measure of privacy and buffer from parking lot, but also defining the boundary line. The fence was within a couple inches of being right on the boundary. I know this because my parents paid for a new fence in 1988 or so and had the yard surveyed as correctly situated. Subsequently, my late parents have been told that the business owner was supposed to have the fence put up next to a residence, so the Daybreak owners have maintained it or replaced it ever since on the same line. The owners have consistently felt their boundary on the side extends to the tree line and I have consistently tried to indicate to them that the trees are or were totally on our side by five or six feet at least. They seem to feel there's a cutout or a corner in the boundary line allowing for more space by the building's extension. That is not correct, as all the lot plans on file at Town Hall will show, it is a straight line perpendicular to West Center Street, all the way to the back line. Lighting yourself up with the old fence, it was easy to see how far off the tree line the actual boundary is. Bear in mind, these lots were laid out around 1948. It is not their fault, but the extension connecting the original garage with the main building was done circa 1970 and simply built too close. My quick look at the zoning regulations indicates a 20-foot setback side to side in business zones. Yet if you line up where the fence was above the asphalt and the partial curb of their parking lot, you quickly see the front corner of that building is barely seven feet from the boundary. Their access path to the back patio therefore involves a substantial part of my backyard. They did a good job cleaning up that area, which had been just used for storage, et cetera, but I would have preferred to be consulted. And without any fencing front or back, the whole area is too wide open for comfort. We don't have anything of great value in our backyard shed, for example, lawnmower, hedge trimmer, et cetera, but we're going to have to lock that down now. And with the potential of inebriated patrons wandering into our backyard at odd hours, that whole side yard issue, which admittedly, we've ignored up to now, becomes more pressing with an alcohol license. Thank you, Jay Miller, 331 West Center Street.
Okay, is he...
So he is still on the meeting, but he is muted. He did mention he is joining from an Android phone. I'm not sure if he's just struggling with functioning the remote meeting. So, his Android won't connect, but I can see the meeting on his PC. You know, his concerns and said, "Thank you."
Okay.
So, I think at this point, because the public hearing has been open and closed, you're going to take in the vote and the proprietor is not here. I think what we do is we just make sure that his comments are part of the official record, but there's no further action required from the board. If you want to speak to it, that's fine, but there's no required action at this point.
Are there any comments from the board?
No.
Well, there are no comments at this point and the meeting was already closed. I guess, we just, you know, if Jay has any concerns as this, as Daybreak proceeds with the license, if he has any concerns, he should address them to us.
That's correct, so if, look, we don't set boundary lines, so if there are, if there are alcohol-related issues or concerns that do occur, I would ask Mr. Miller to forward to our office and that way, the licensing board, you know, will take action and if it needs so, then the licensing board would have to be involved. If the, if the ongoing issue is the fact that there seems to be a boundary line dispute, that is not an alcohol-related issue. And as a result, it is something that either, quite frankly, because most likely, this has been in place for many, many, many years, he would be better off to consult an attorney at that point.
Okay, but prior to going to an attorney, who should he, who here? Can he address his boundary line issues? You know, in the event, there is an easily resolved issue between whose land is whose there, is that something he can go to? I mean, move the records, be...
So he's already referred to the fact that he went to the assessors who are going to have the lot plans.
Okay.
But, again, there's nobody here that can adjudicate and say, "You need to move this plot line, lot line." If, if there is a boundary issue to be resolved probably through...
Okay, so there's no document he can go to that says, "Yes, I'm correct, this is my lot line."
Well, he can, but the thing is, is that if this has been going on for 30 years, he says 1970, then, I mean, there's, there's copious cave law that if you're on somebody else's property for 50 years, you can't then say, "Oh, this is really my line." No, I'm not saying that's what occurred, but that's why he really should consult an attorney at that point.
Okay.
There's nothing the town can do to amend that. Obviously, we're more than willing to talk to him, but... That's why, in reference to this board and the license, if there is an alcohol-specific issue, that's where we really, we can have jurisdiction at that point.
Okay. Well, hopefully, he heard us at least. I don't, can't tell if he's still on the call or not.
I did email him and let him know that I read his email out loud and that you guys voted in favor of approving the license and that we will communicate his concerns to the business owner. And I can send another follow-up email, kind of detailing what you just discussed.
Okay, thank you, Lorna. Okay, running a little late. It is 6:45, we'll start budget hearings first with Southeastern Regional School District. Who do we have on the call for that?
Little Hope Superintendent. And with me is Colleen Maloney, Representative for West Bridgewater, and Mark Morris, Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Finance.
Hey, thank you for joining, we want to present your budget.
Sure, yeah, well, just, I'll, I'll go kind of, kind of quickly through this. You know, I want to respect your time, but, you know, definitely welcome questions. I will say that at this point, the school committee has not voted the budget. We anticipate, I'm hopeful that that'll happen next Tuesday, at which time you would get from the treasurer, the assessments, although I can, I will share with you what we believe the assessment's going to be. So this first slide shows where, for about the 14th year now, we operate at what's called net school spending. So our budget process is a little different than a lot of schools. We start with the amount of, the amount of operating funds that the state says we're required to use by law and then we try to cut our budget requests down to meet that number. And if we can't, in the past, we've been able to tap into E and D, but we've continued to operate at net school spending as this budget this year is. So that first number there, $31,120,000, that's our Chapter 70 Foundation Budget of Required Spending for FY '22. Go to the next slide. You'll see that that's broken up by Chapter 78 and required district contribution. I have it highlighted there, I'm having a hard time seeing that, but it's 1.1497801, I believe. That's the start of figuring out what the assessments are. So, okay, so we can go on to the next one. And I'll just show you, this gets into the enrollment. You see, the biggest increase was, it was to do to the fact that we have, we have another 107 students from the previous year. So, so that's, you know, that's pretty significant, the largest, largest one-year increase we've had since the school started. West Bridgewater, on the very bottom, went from 42 students to 48 students. The required contribution went up, I think it's 104, 3... Can't see that, I'm sorry.
174.
104, 174, thank you. And that's the start. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about ESSER II and how that, oh, that's perfect, thank you so much. Trying to, trying to read that. So, so I'll show you, I'll kind of keep going through how that works. So all these documents that you've seen so far are come right out of the Department of Ed, come right out of the governor's budget and are being deliberated now. So new this year, part of the federal aid that goes to schools is this, what's called ESSER II. The communities have the, have the ability in actually to vote by the Board of Selectmen to use up to 75% of the ESSER II grant, which we receive, but you can request and then we have to send it to you. So the $591,243 gets distributed to all our nine communities based on the required minimum contribution percentage. And you'll see that in the next slide. And I can, obviously, I know that's new, so I can explain that a little bit. So, so basically, that $591,243 gets applied on a percentage of not enrollment, a percentage of, of required spending, that FY '22, 11.8 million there, which is good for the towns, because if it was, if it was based on enrollment alone, Brockton would get the lion's share of that. So for West Bridgewater, what that means is, is you can, by vote, and we'll explain that to you when you get a letter from the treasurer, by vote of the Board of Selectmen, you can say you want to avail yourselves of ESSER II and allocate $29,838 to reduce your assessment obligation to Southeastern. And you may be familiar, there's an additional amount that, that, that goes directly to the West Bridgewater Public School System. I looked at that just before this meeting, I think that's... I think that's a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight eighty-nine. That's additional grant money that's available to the town of West Bridgewater to help offset some of the increases in required minimum contribution. So, so your percentage from Southeastern's amount is twenty-nine, eight thirty-eight. Where, as we write this grant, we're, we're making the assumption that the towns, all nine of our communities are going to avail themselves of the full seventy-five percent. You could always say, listen, we don't need that twenty-nine thousand. Go and spend it however you see fit, but it's really, it's up to the Board of Selectmen. And Mark Morris, who's with me today, checked with Jay Sullivan at the Department of Revenue, I guess, and he confirmed that, that it's a by vote of the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct, Mark?
Right, so Jay Sullivan of the Department of Education, the Board of Selectmen would have to take a vote to avail themselves of the ESSR two funding if they were like.
Great. All right, why don't we go to the next slide? Again, I'm trying to, trying to be, be cognizant of your, I've already talked about the enrollment is up a hundred and seven percent, so we don't need, we don't need to go, I mean, a hundred and seven students, not percent. So, so that thirty-one, one twenty-eight that you see, you saw at the very first slide, that's how we build our budget, that's that top number. The state aid is how much we get to the state, and that local assessment, that's the required minimum contribution. If there's any additional, in, in, any additional money, you would have seen, you would, that, you would see that in that top blue bar. So once again, we're not asking, asking for more than the minimum. You'll see the cost of transportation is, is, is one point seven million dollars for, for twenty twenty-two. And, and any, any refund, any, any aid that comes from the state goes right back to the towns. Right now, it's, it's, we're anticipating it to be one million, three hundred and one thousand, nine sixty-five. I want to let you know that we have not get, received our regional transportation aid. So, so that typically, that, that, that payment is higher. So, so that, so that may actually be good news, where, as opposed to having to pay four hundred and one thousand for transportation. This is, this is district-wide, not West Bridgewater. You could, you could pay, it, it could, it could reduce, further reduce your assessment. So what, that money is yours, so whatever money we receive from the state goes right back to the communities. So, so, so that's why that's in yellow. If, if we don't get that number by the time they vote the budget, when we do receive it, we would just further reduce the assessment. The other expenses there, I just, just, just sit up there for a second. I just want to, want to show that the, we had made a commitment to, to keep the hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for the capital appreciation, the old MSBA project. Again, we're doing that, we're taking the balance from our receipts. We also, you, we also are, the bond payment that replaced the ESCO payment, you may know that we're building an auditorium, we saved up money for quite a few years, and we were able to basically flip the ESCO bond and take advantage of a low bond. So, so the, the actual cost for the, if, for the ESCO would have been higher. So we're, so we're, it's actually, it'll be a little bit less of a capital cost. And, and because we were able to bond that at such a low rate, we're going to be able to save, I, I think that the number is, is about one point two million over, over the twenty years of that, of, to the communities. So, and those other ones are just payments on this, that, that fund is fully funded, so there is no assessment there. And then we applied that ESSR five ninety-one, two forty-three to, again, assuming that every, the, all the boards and the city council is going to vote to, to, to use that full money to reduce your assessment. So go down to the next page, please. And that's, I highlighted down on the bottom, West Bridgewater. Basically, you know, what you want to know, it was the assessment, again, once it's voted by the, 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 the school committee, we anticipate to be for West Bridgewater, six hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ten minus the, the ESSR reduction there. So the increase from the previous year is forty-five thousand, three twenty-four. So you kind of do quick math, I think, I forgot what the number, how many new students divide by the forty-three, forty-five, three twenty-four. It's somewhere around seventy-seven hundred dollars a student. So really, the result of that increase is really the additional students that, that are attending Southeastern. And I apologize, I know I went really quick, you know, I know you were falling a little bit behind schedule, so I just wanted to be respectful of that.
So are you ready for questions, or did you?
I, I am, no.
Okay, all right, so you're saying that the assessment of forty-five thousand dollars is after the thirty thousand dollars from the ESSR grants applied?
Yeah, that's the increase from previous year. So if you look at FY twenty-one, your assessment was five forty-nine, three thirty-five. FY twenty-two is going to be five ninety-four, six fifty-nine. That's the, it's, it's, it's minus, it's minus the ESSR amount.
So without that grant, we would have been at six hundred, over six hundred thousand?
You would have been at six twenty-three, six-ten. What, so when you get, when you get the, when you get the, the certified assessment from the treasurer, it's going to, it's going to say that the assessment of FY twenty-two is six hundred twenty-three thousand, six-ten. However, you can opt to apply whatever the amount is, it's on that page there. Oh, it says, it says it up there, twenty-eight thousand. Yeah.
Twenty-nine, eight thirty-eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get to that in a moment. I'm just trying to understand the raw numbers without applying the grant. So what was our per-cost student in fiscal year twenty-one?
You would just have to divide that number, the five forty-nine, three thirty-five divided by your.
Could you calculate that? I don't have a calculator in front of me, if you could do that, please.
Sounds like it potentially could have gone down, the per-pupil expense.
It could have, so, so there's a lot of, and I didn't, again, typically, you know, we send you the whole thing. The, 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 one of the reasons of per pupil, there's a lot of factors, as you know, with the formula. One of the factors is that we used to make up five point eight percent of the school age population attended Southeastern. That has increased, increased to six point eight percent. So that's, that's a, that's a factor as well. Obviously, the enrollment is the biggest factor. And, and I could pull up.
Yeah, I, I really like stand what the.
So, so while, yeah, so while, Lou, while you're pulling that up, this chair, the per pupil enrollment cost for FY twenty-one was twelve thousand, nine ninety-one. And this year, it is at, give me one second here.
Not counting the grant?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, FY twenty-one, sorry, last year was thirteen thousand, oh seventy-nine. And this year, it's at twelve thousand, nine ninety-one, so it's actually decreased.
Is that including the grant?
Not including the grant.
Including the grant, okay, good.
Yeah, so it's decreased, yep.
Would be, why wouldn't not vote in favor of using the grant?
We're assuming that everyone's going to, like, for example, a, a, a community like Foxborough may say, we have a bunch of new growth, we have to spend it, so, you know, so we'd rather, we'd rather apply that. I, you know, I don't, I don't know scenarios under what, you may say from, from, from a, from a financing standpoint, that you want, you know, that the school department wants to use their full two hundred and twenty-nine thousand of the ESSR grant for, you know, for, for working with students that are performing under grade levels out of the pandemic, for COVID-related expenses, things like that. So, so, you know, so it's, it's up to the town, how you want to apply that money. But, but we're, we're making the assumption that, that you're going to avail yourself of the full seventy-five percent.
So are you saying we could use the ESSR grant for, for the West Bridgewater School versus Southeastern Regional?
No, you did both. So there's, you're getting two, so there, so the ESSR grants go to the, to the school districts. So, so Southeastern is getting whatever it was, five hundred and ninety-one thousand. I think that's seventy-five percent of the grant there. West Bridgewater, if you go and look at West Bridgewater's sheets from, from the Department of Education, their ESSR two grant amount is two hundred twenty-nine thousand, one eighty-five. So the school department gets the grant, but you as a board can say, we want seventy-five percent of that because, because, to, to help, to help offset the assessment increase. The two separate grants, and you can't, you know, you can't apply one to the other, and you can't use more than what the increase is. So if your increase, again, I don't know what West Bridgewater is, but let's say the assessment increase to West Bridgewater was only a hundred thousand, you could, you couldn't use the full a hundred and seventy-one thousand. You can only, you can only reduce them up to the amount that, that, the, the amount of, the, the increase from FY twenty-one to twenty-two. I know it's a little confusing, it was confusing to us, and, and, and being, being a regional district, it's even more confusing, but.
I think for the first time, that's part of my confusion here. Mary and Anthony, did you have any questions?
I do not.
I don't have any either.
Yeah, so, so just, just as a, as a, as a, as a highlight, when you're, typically, when enrollment goes up, the more kids you have, the less per pupil costs are. So just kind of remember that, it's, it's counterintuitive, but the, 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 the more students, the less per pupil costs and the more state aid communities get. It's, it's, it's counterintuitive, but that's how the formula works. So that's why, like, someone pointed out that, that your per pupil costs actually are going down because there's, because there's more students.
Okay, is, is there, if there aren't any more questions, is there a motion this budget?
I'll make a motion that we pass this to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Anthony, yes.
Raise yes, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, again, running a little late, six fifty, we have education, I think we have a school committee on, are all members on? Bill, Sue, Mark, Molly, David, Donna?
I think we're all, I think we, we're all here in the room together. We do have a presentation, I think Mrs. Hume is going to try to share her presentation, if that's possible. All right, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For a second, thank you very much for this opportunity. Do have a presentation I'd like to run through, and then obviously leave lots of time for questions that you may have. You know, we, when we stopped building the budget, we're definitely a mission-driven school. The mission of West Bridgewater Public Schools is to work together with home and the community, provide our students a safe environment in which to acquire the knowledge, skills, and values necessary for success in a diverse and global society of the twenty-first century. So really, that drives, the mission drives our beliefs every day in school, but also certainly as we go through the budget. Again, priorities for us, certainly our programming and providing opportunities for all of our students, proactively addressing the social, emotional, and mental health needs, along with the academic needs of all of our students, and the continued support and growth for all of our educators and support staff, so they can, they can really deliver that high-quality education. The budget is not a real linear process, it really goes up and down. I mean, we need to look at our district priorities, our improvement plans, our recent knee-ass visit, my goals, our administrative goals, our educator goals, the social, emotional, and mental health needs in the district, and increasing student achievement. So it really all reflects back on our budget, and all pieces are very important when developing the budget. This is something you probably have seen before, and know, it just really shows where our funding comes from. Both of it comes from what the town of West Bridgewater. We do get about twenty-five percent from the state through Chapter Seventy funding, and the school district does contribute about fifteen percent annually through school choice grants and different revolving accounts. And the next slide is going to talk a little bit about what those are. And this, in general, just wanted to show that our overall per pupil expenditure, basically taking all of our students and dividing it out by our budget, calculates our per pupil, is low compared to the state average and twenty-third from the lowest in the state. So I do believe, and I know this has been said before, we get a lot of bang for our buck here in West Bridgewater. Very proud of what we do and what we have done and will continue to do, but our starting point seems to be pretty low compared to other districts. In terms of school choice, which accounts for a lot of our school contributions, we're very proud that this year, in the year of the pandemic, we had a hundred and fifty-five applications in by the due date, which is our most ever. It shows that people want to come to West Bridgewater, and this is a strong tradition. This isn't a just-this-year kind of thing. We've developed a tradition over the years of being a school of choice for many families and students, and they want to be here for the academics and all the extracurricular activities. But the school choice numbers we have today may not always be there. We know that there's many homes being built in town, and we know that when we look very carefully at the school choice numbers, we're very careful not to overcrowd particular grades. We just put in our SIMS data, so we'll be looking at that, and we'll be allowing certain students to enroll in certain grades, so we don't increase class size. With the space, we'll add people. If there's not space, we won't add them, because we've never wanted to use school choice just as a financial thing. We wanted to use it to balance the class size. For example, we have twenty-nine school choice students in our senior class this year. So to maintain the same level budget, we're going to have to fill all those spots at various grade levels. If we can't meet that target over time, then we'll lose money, that'll go towards the school contribution, and it, it becomes a financial gap from the one point five million or so, then we're going to have to make up that money somewhere. So we hope to continue that people want to be here as long as we have the available space in school choice. Again, this kind of just breaks down our fifteen percent of the school contributions with a little over one point five million through school choice, and then through special education grants that we receive, CIRCA breaker, which is basically money that's repaid back to us over a certain percentage for special education students and then revolving accounts. So over two point three million of our budget comes from the schools and their contributions. We've, we've definitely had some learning gaps this year. It's been a real tough year for all of our kids, our staff, and our families. Since March, we have not had them in school full-time, but thankfully, starting in April, we'll get them back full-time, and we're incredibly excited about that. But we'll need to look at, define, assess, and address all of those different learning gaps. We're going to have to look at the social, emotional wellbeing that's been, being, that's been created, the gaps due to the stress of this past year. So there's going to be a lot of looking back at where we are and where we're going through this pandemic. Funding, we use CARES funding through Plymouth County this year to supplement a lot of PPEs, technology, and some of our remote teachers. We've used ESSR one funding, about sixty-seven thousand dollars for funding for, again, things for this year due to COVID-nineteen. ESSR two will be applying sometime in April for an amount, which will be using through fiscal year twenty-three. And then the third set of funding, ESSR three, it's undetermined right now, but we believe it to be probably two times what the ESSR two is. So we do know there's money available moving forward to help address some of these gaps, both in financial gaps, but also the learning gaps and the social, emotional gaps that have been created. Special education, whoops. So again, we've need to provide students in the least restricted environment. So again, we've need to provide students in the least restrictive environment a free and appropriate education to all special education students from age three to 22. And their IEPs dictate the appropriate placements for each student and those are team decisions. And these are the most unpredictable costs in any budget and honestly in any school. Because outside placements for those students who can't meet their needs in school have to be met. So we have to provide those placements. In addition, transportation to these placements must be covered by West Bridgewater. And I'll go into a bit more detail on what those expenses may look like. Currently, 1.2% of our population is placed in an outside, in an out of district placement. And this represents about $2 million or 12% of our budget. Numbers that are so fluid and ever changing. CIRCA breaker, like I mentioned before, is funding that we get back and it goes into our school contributions. It's available to us for payments over the $45,000. She is, this money hasn't been fully funded by the state. So we're looking at this number and making an estimate on what we're going to get from them. And just an example, after the budget was passed last year, over this summer, we had a family move into town that resulted in a tuition that we needed to pay for an out of district placement of about $60,000 with about $40,000 in transportation. So they could work either way. We could have move ins, we could have move outs. But it's incredibly fluid. And again, that's just an important thing to, to mention. And just of the 17 students, so of that 1, 2.2%, they fall into out of district placements into three categories, our collaborative schools. So you may get North River, Reed's, social collaborative, Southeast Collaborative and Pilgrim, Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Those tuitions range from about 55,000 to 80,000 a year. Massachusetts Public Schools, we have students over East Bridgewater. Those programs range from about 32 to 45,000. And then non-public, private, special education programs through Amigo, London Center for Children, Riverview School, Meeting Street School can range anywhere from 65,000 to 350,000 in yearly tuition that goes up every year. And again, these are the needs for our students. So these are what the team decides. They need to be placed in these place, in these placements. But again, we have very little say often in where they go and certainly in the cost. Transportation, again, the costs vary depending on the student's need, whether you need a wheelchair van or the distance traveled. And the projected costs that we're estimating for this year, everything between 12,000 to 80,000 dollars per student. And again, that can change in a moment's notice. It changed this year due to the pandemic when they had restrictions on the vans. We had to get increased transportation vehicles because of that need. This is just a graph to show you that our special education cost for in-house, the tuition and the transportation continues to go up every year. So we've looked over a long span of years. You can see the, it continues to go up. And again, that's, that's similar in all districts. We, we're looking at needs that aren't in our budget. We're looking to see if we can find these on our own. But I, I thought it's important to show you what some of these needs are again, because we didn't put them into the FY 22. We went, I know last year the school department came and asked for a mental health professional. It was certainly needed last year. It absolutely needed this year as well. Because of the increase of student needs, the mental health needs are unbelievable. And it's real difficult with the kids coming back. At the middle, senior, high school, we're looking for a learning center with a special education teacher. It's a program that replicates what goes on at the elementary schools, the Howard and the Roselle. But again, identifying the learning gaps for these students through this tough year is very necessary. And ESL teacher, we've had a major increase over the past few years of students coming in that need English language services. Just in one year, we increased from 29 to 44 students. And the students have a wide range of needs within each of the four schools. And again, there's a cost to not adding these programs. There's certainly a cost to add them, to add teachers into the program. But if we don't add them in, then we're not, we're not providing them with the both the faith, free and appropriate public education to all of our students. EL students, we may not meet the delivery grid needs that they have. And this could result in our special education students and our students with severe mental health concerns, placement out of the district. And again, those placements could range 40 to 80,000 or more per year. So when you really look at it, the big picture, the overall cost of not having the position is much greater potentially than having the staff costs included. And finally, just a little bit of an overview of where we're at, what we're looking at in terms of our proposed, proposed appropriation is an increase of 4.8%. 665,638 dollars. And included within our budget is our school contribution, bringing over the total requested budget for 16 million. Again, these are things that we feel we really need. And I'll just go into a little bit more detail and break down that 4.8%. And here, here it shows you that what the special education costs are for an increase and then the remainder of the budget. On the next page, it breaks down that remainder a little bit more. Asian out of district placements have increased about 1.3%. Teacher, then we break it down by the negotiated raises for this year, 222,000 about is 1.6%. Step and track in their contracts. Step, just if you're unfamiliar, step is when you go down. So if you go from year three to year four, there's a, there is a contractual increase. And if they go from a bachelor's to a master's degree, that's a track change. So they're moving over. So all years that the teachers are moving down until they get to a certain level. But they need to continue their education to move over. So it's conceivable they could do both. But they're at least going to be doing one. And then there's a net increase that a remaining budget of $11,000 that that's just, you know, budget lines that go up, budget lines that go down through many different lines. So that again, the total increase is a 665,638 dollars, which equals 4.8%. Again, we're looking for your support. We know that we're a big budget. We know that it's an expensive thing, but I, I have to impress upon you. And I know the school committee also believes this. We feel it's a fiscally responsible budget that meets the needs of our students. Any cuts to this budget will directly affect the education of our students in West Bridgewater. You know, losing teachers, but also losing academic and extracurricular programs. I only thought it's prudent to kind of share with you some of the, what these cuts could look like. Because again, they're really directly affecting, for example, any kind of cuts for in the elementary schools. We have to look at taking a class that may have five sections, cutting them down to four sections, which would increase our class size up to potentially 29 per class. Cutting a middle, senior, high school teacher results in again, increased class size, but also the loss of, loss of elective classes or AP class, which is also elective. But that's what students are really striving for in terms of going off to college. The loss of a fine arts or a music teacher at either level. Cuts also would affect middle school sports and JV sports and extracurricular activities. I think our extracurricular activity stipends are about $70,000. We value tremendously our extracurricular activities and we don't want to lose them. But any cuts will inevitably could affect them. Increase in user fees, loss of academic specialist teachers for some of our needy as kids. And I think ultimately, when we go back to the school choice piece, what we really need to look at is we're thriving through school choice. The numbers are there. People want to come here. It's, it's exciting to see people come into the, you know, the Spring Street School, happy to have their application in hand because they want to be here. Excited to come here if we have large class sizes or we need to make some substantial cuts. So we're hoping there are no cuts. I mean, that's always been our belief. We're putting forward a budget that's fiscally responsible. And we certainly will answer any questions that you may have about our budget. And Mrs. Grant is here along with the school committee. So any questions you may have, please let us know. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, but I did want to bring one up first. We just met with Southeastern Regional and we were supposed to, or maybe we wait until the second round of reviewing budgets, take a vote as to whether we want to avail ourselves of the S R two funding, David? We didn't do that and which falls into this budget now. And I don't think we've ever taken a vote. That we avail ourselves of the S R two funding with the West Bridgewater Public Schools, so.
That is accurate. Mark, do you want to speak on that?
Um, our S R two money, we, we've had some estimates on allocations. We haven't applied for the grant yet. We did receive S R one funding. And again, Mrs. Grant is here, but I, I do not believe there was any S R one money that was allocated to Southeastern. So we're continuing to look at that. The S R two money would be for FY 22, but we're not proposing to put it into the budget per se. We're proposing to use it for the greatest needs when we get into the school year.
So, I mean, the, the reality is this, is that I do not meet, I have a meeting every other week where DSE, Department of Education, Secretary of Education is on and they talk about also, but they don't drill down. So it was news to me when Superintendent Lopez said that there is a vote of the Board of Selectmen where it sounds like that a hundred percent of the S R can go to the school district. I'm going to choose to take a vote to reduce it up to 75%. Put a star down so I could talk to Mark Morris and understand it better. But I was aware of the $67,000 that went directly to the school last year. $48,000 for this year that would be available. But I have not been made privy to the fact that a vote could or would be necessary. I had always been led to believe and, and Mark tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I just always been led to believe that was money directly to you. But I had not heard from the school saying anything about that vote, similar to what we heard from Southeast Regional.
Yes. Mrs. Grant says something. I have something to add too.
Yes. Hi. To be honest, I've sat in on multiple webinars given by the State Education Department regarding S R two funding. And this is absolutely the first I've heard of having to share anything with it. For our S R one funding, we were originally required to share with private schools that are within our district, just the way we have to do for all the type federal title grants. Fortunately, the only private school located in our West Bridgewater district refuse, does not participate in federal funding. So that did not apply to us. And I actually, what we were told on our call regarding S R two funding was that there would be no equitable share. That each, each school district would receive their funding and not even have to offer to share it anywhere. So honestly, I'm shocked by what he said and intend to look into this further.
Yeah. I mean, that's our intent to make sure we get it right, obviously. And part of that goes through the, the grant application, which hasn't happened yet. So we will do our research as well.
Right.
Good to know. The other question on the slide, F A P E, I think it was F A P E?
Yes.
Was labeled that the risk was we, we of not being compliant with least restrictive environment. Is that we may not be or you're definite, we are not going to be?
No, it's, it, it would depend on each case. I mean, we, we need to provide it here. If we can't provide them the free and appropriate public education, then we, then the team would decide, okay, we need to find another placement. So it's, it's not even definite. We'd have to look at the needs of each individual student. But it's a concern that we have if we can't offer the program like we have at the other elementary schools, that it's likely there. But it's not, it's certainly not definite because we want to see how they work at the middle, senior, high schools.
So right now we are in compliance?
Yep. Yep. We are because those students that we're looking at are mostly in the, at the elementary level still.
And the $250,000 that's step and track, just so I understand it right, step is more of a longevity increase. The longer you're here, the more money you get. It has nothing to do with seeking higher education or anything, correct?
That's correct. So every year they, that they, you know, they start up, you know, step one and it'll incrementally go down to the bottom of the scale. And then, then they'll get longevity on top of that, but they don't move steps at a certain.
Oh, so that's, so step you get, the longer you stay plus longevity?
Once you get to, Alec.
Yes, you do. At, at a certain point, and, and to be honest, I don't know exactly which year that your school, the year 11.
10, 10 is the end and then it's a step 15.
All right. You have to break down in between that, how much of that 250,000 is the step and how much is track?
I don't have the step and track breakdown. That's pretty hard to break out. I have it broken out between the negotiated COLA raise and step and track.
Okay. Okay. So then there was, this is my last question. There was a slide that showed what the budget cuts would look like. If you had to incur budget, budget cuts. How much of a budget cut would it take to hit on all of them that you portrayed?
That, that was the potential and it was, I really wanted to put options down there. What we would do anytime there's a budget cut, we've had discussions with the building administrators. We look at what, what the greatest, what cuts would have the least effect on kids. So those, that probably would equal, you know, lots of money. I can't even put a dollar figure on it. But it's, it's a, we would try to look at potential in various areas of where cuts could happen.
Okay. So that, that, what was shown on that screen, on that slide could potentially be if we cut your budget by, well, I don't say we cut it, but if your budget was cut by $5 million.
That would be real bad. No. Okay. So a million dollar figures to each one. And then again, we, we, you know, we've done this, but we've had to do it before for potentials. And you start picking and choosing, sorry, this school could do this. You try to spread things out and so forth. So it's a substantial potential and it's spread out amongst many different, both academic and extracurricular. So it's not an all inclusive. I just, my main point really was simply to show that any cuts really, any cuts will affect students because we don't have fluff. We don't have extras that can easily be cut that won't affect students. Any kind of cut is really affecting students. So.
Yeah. It's just a slide like that is, it's really dramatic when you see something like that. And then you stop and say to yourself, okay, but under what circumstance does that happen? So I just wanted some clarification on that. I don't have any more questions per se. Anthony?
So I guess the first thing I'd say is I personally don't have any desire to take any of your S R money. I think it's clear that's fully intended for the school's use. And I appreciate the presentation and highlights, but I feel like we missed on a lot of aspects of the actual budget. So I'd like to go through the budget more line by line, not necessarily school by school. I think you have them in the school by school, but there's things like maintenance and other things, even utilities, I think that we missed on by just having those highlights.
Absolutely. No, that's why we provided to you and we're more than willing to go through. You say, you know, a page number or a line and we can, you can ask any question. We'll give you, give you the answers that we have.
All right. Lauren, is it possible to share, go back to the meeting packet?
Yes, I'm actually in the process of pulling that up right now.
If you, I think. I'm looking at page fifty-one, but it looks like it might be different for you. The full budget.
If you look at the bottom, it may say the page number, that doesn't.
Number three thousand.
Yeah, that's, sorry, the one you were just on, the full budget, that spreadsheet, the three thousand, education three thousand. Yep. Yeah. So I guess the things that just have changed, I guess, more than, say, ten thousand, I think the other ones are probably insignificant below that. But I guess if you could just touch on briefly, probably start. Or I guess anything that's changed more than ten thousand, say, if you could just touch on it quickly.
Sure, I'm just trying to see, it's honestly hard to see what that page is now. Is that the cover sheet? I have, no, I have the cover sheet.
So why don't you look at the cover sheet and read off the line number and the description for what you'd like to discuss? Because, for instance, if we discuss every item, if I'm looking at it right now, I see principals budget went up twelve thousand dollars. That's one percent over the previous year. So you you'd like to discuss why we increased one percent on that line item?
Actually, just quickly touch on, I mean, that's one, that one is explanatory, but anything over ten thousand, I get it's only one percent. But I'd say that's kind of, I don't know, just the benchmark or the number I chose, I guess.
What you'll have to do is just, when we look at each one, we just bear with us, because we have to flip to the individual page, because that gives us many more details, if that's all right. So if we start with the first one looks over is three, two, two, zero principals, so that's.
If everyone who you all have packets, I believe, you can go to page five. And that twelve thousand dollars, the detail of what makes it up is there?
So typically, in fact, if you don't mind, typically what happens when we go through budgets and there's an increase, such as like Anthony set the level at and said ten thousand dollars, we'll hear it's contractual, it's staff, it's track, or it's what you negotiated for salary. So I I think that's what we're looking for. We're not looking to dig through this twenty pages. Correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony.
Yeah, no, exactly. Just a brief, brief overview.
Okay. We have year over year in trying to understand the budget versus the presentation we're used to versus the presentation you give. I know this is the same issue we've had year over year at the Finance Committee. Is that we all follow the same spreadsheet for all of the departments, and it's really hard for us to understand your presentation when it's different and doesn't tie into these numbers straight on the spreadsheet.
Okay, can I ask you a clarifying question? So the the budget that we give, which is a cover page, and then the individual pages that correlate back to the page, that's the same, that's what you receive year every year, is that correct?
It is, but we have every year asked to go back to our initial spreadsheet and to keep it as simple as possible. It's a little bit more transparent to us when we use the same format year over year, and we can track the changes.
I I do, are you telling, I'm sorry, just just, because I'm just, I was seeing the first year. Are you saying the same format that's used by other departments?
Yes. Yes, that one spreadsheet, that one page, that budget three thousand.
All right, so if I may. This is what is received from the school.
Hopefully I can't hear.
I can't hear.
There's multiple people talking at the same time, so if everyone could just give us a moment for David to finish what he's saying.
So we received page fifty-two from the school department. This is probably the software that is used, maybe statewide, I'm not sure. But this is the software that is used, and then they give us this information. And then we could back up to page fifty-one, Lorna. This here then is what actually goes to town meeting, because it is the same format as every other budget. Quite frankly, it's the exact same numbers. It's the same lines, it is the same line item account number. You'll see the left inside top line, thirty-one, ten, school committee with ten thousand four fifty and a hundred fifty dollar increase. If we go to the next slide, it is the exact same number labeled as such. So I guess the question is, is that we can use this slide here, Mark? You and Kathy are most comfortable with. It correlates to the previous slide. In this one here, as Anthony says, your first line thirty-two, twenty principals is up twelve thousand five fifty-nine, greater one percent. But using the ten thousand dollars as the barometer, that would just spare the question to explain that line.
That's, thank you, that that helps. And we have no problem, I think, putting it on to any other form. We just never have done that as far as I know. We've always used the sheet that's on the screen now, and then the sheets that follow to provide more detail. So moving forward, if there's something we can do that makes it easier for you to review, because we certainly want to provide you as much information and answer any questions. So we're not trying to add any confusion. We're just, I think we've been following past practice of it. So we could certainly go through and start with the principal line. And if there are any, you know, questions, you know, after that, just let us know.
Okay, so that's contractual. And just to clarify a little more, if you do look at page five, which is more detail, that's made up of about fifteen line items. So that's, you know, it brings you into the weeds. Those are contractual.
Next one would be teaching services.
Mark, I'm just looking for something brief, like that one you already went over. That's the step and track increases.
Okay, that's easy.
I don't think you have to necessarily refer back, just a brief overview.
Sure. Still the services.
Those are contractual increases of three percent.
Right, and then the added this. And then I think the thirty-nine hundred looks like the next one over ten thousand, which is the added district tuition.
That's Aggie, Norfolk Aggie.
We budgeted a certain number of kids for Norfolk Aggie, and we had one more student attending there this year than the previous year. And that's unfortunately the price we pay for Norfolk Aggie at twenty-five thousand, because we don't have a agricultural school in Plymouth County. If we did have one, it'd be about two thousand dollars. That's what they pay for their assessment. Spent services.
Those are contractual raises as well as all other services we provide to special ed students in-house.
So that's. Okay, I'm one ahead. So the, a question on the next one, thirty-two, thirty-two, that increase is that that's a hundred and one thousand, is that all step and track increases, or does that include additional staffing?
Hold on one second.
So there's two factors to this one. Some are step and track in there. The other difference is that we applied less school contribution to that line item than in the previous year. This year, we applied ninety-seven thousand dollars of our school contribution for fiscal year twenty-two. In fiscal year twenty-one, we applied two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to that line of school contribution. So right there, you have just about a hundred thousand dollar decrease in additional funding that we were able to provide, because some of our circuit breaker funding has been decreased. Okay, the remainder is step and track, teaching services for special education. We did have to add during our current year, to instructional assistance for individual education plans that require these children to have one-to-one. So that would be included in that line item.
We did have an increase in the spent psychological services. If you look deeper on it, it's on page twenty-nine. We went up five thousand dollars more in testing. We found that the amount we budgeted before for testing for students who'll go out for specialized testing or psychological testing was not sufficient. So it's kind of gone up each year, but we added five thousand dollars there, and then the rest were contractual increases. Train, transportation is next. That's one of those areas I think I got to look at deeper.
Yeah, I think you hit on that one.
Yeah, we touched on that. Out of district tuition is another one that, again, is so fluid. It's it's, they increase every year plus of the move-ins and so forth.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry if I overcomplicated that. I just wanted to make sure we touched on things that may not have been highlighted in the presentation.
Totally understand. Again, we don't want to try and answer some any questions as we go.
Mary, did you have any questions?
I guess my only question is this. Well, I don't know, I'm just a little surprised, I guess, to see increases coming from the department when we've been able to get all of the town to work together to try to keep our budgets a little lower. I'm not sure what the answer is here. I I don't know. I guess that's my only.
Can I speak to that?
I'm going to, and Mrs. Sullivan is going to speak to that.
So with regard to the, who else is on here? Who's got volume? Sorry, Mark. Sorry, with regard to the the increase for the the COLA increases, as being a member of the negotiations committee with Bill Flynn, it's not for lack of effort that we had not consistently met with the union reps and trying to and suggest other ways that we could have them take a zero for this year. Several suggestions had been raised, and at the end of each one, ultimately, the union just refused to open the contract. This is our year three of our contract. And legally speaking, they don't have to. Just like if they had asked us to open it, we wouldn't have to either. So at that point, they have made that decision. They were not going to open the contract, and that's why we had to budget for those COLA raises. We're well aware that your letter had stated it was going to be level funded. That's why we pulled out the step and track, because that issue, as well as the other contractual obligations, were allowed in your letter. He specifically stated that they were allowed. And it's at this time, that's again, more follow-up for Mark's slide about what are the possibilities if we are cut? Those are real possibilities if we're cut for that COLA in particular. Those are actual resulting, or actual results that are going to come from any cuts because of the unions' failure to want to be a team. Nothing that we don't have any control over that. By it's at the end, it is always going to affect the students. Because they're going to get their raise, because it's under contract. It's going to affect the students. Prices are going to be bigger. They're going to get possible cuts for athletics, for other extracurricular activities. But if we're, you know, cut on services, then do it. So I just wanted to understand. We we met probably, what, six, seven times? Six, seven times, kept going back with other alternatives. Would they extend it for a year, have a zero this year, and then take their two point two five next year? No. Will you, you know, be a team player? Mark had made a a very valid presentation to the union reps explaining how everyone else in the town is taking a zero. Peter, Mark, David, everybody, everybody in the town's taking a zero. They're, they refused to open the contract. There was some acknowledgement. There was also a lot of doubt that they felt that this should be maybe funded with the, you know, what we call the slush account from the town. The stabilization account. And Bill and I and the rest of the school committee feels that we support the perspective and the philosophy of David, who says that, you know, that town's, you know, stabilization account should not be used for raises. And we agree. So at this point, we can't use any of our funding, whether it's S R or anything else, to use and fund for these raises, because we believe in that philosophy as well. We support that. So it's really just we're between a rock and a hard place, and the only one that's going to suffer are the students.
And the one thing, I think Mrs. Sullivan did allude to it, but we are, we'll be going into negotiations next year for the following year. So I think that's just important to know, that we know the financial circumstances ask do they? And we can't make any promises, but we certainly will, you know, we are begin bargaining.
I just add, thank you, Mark. Bill and I were very clear that come next year, when we open negotiations, starting with the zero. Very clear. The union actually even responded with, we know you're going to come in with a zero next year, but we'll wait until next year comes and we'll deal with it then. As frustrating as it is, it's the reality that we can't change their minds, and they don't have to.
Yeah, I, you know, we appreciate that the school committee worked very hard on this. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that's where we are right now, because, you know, as Meredith already pointed out, zero percent raises throughout the town, fire, police, department heads. Everyone joined together with the community through a difficult time, so it's unfortunate. And I respect the fact that they have a contract, but we didn't plan on COVID. The people in town that are either underemployed or unemployed didn't plan on COVID. No one planned on this devastation, and a lot of the hurt isn't necessarily visible residents of West Bridgewater. It's still, it's when you start talking to people and find out, oh, my husband used to have a great job, that industry is gone. He's. So when you start talking to folks and you and you hear how to work, or or can't afford the extras anymore because of what's happened with COVID, and they don't, may not qualify for certain funding, you know, what you see on the outside isn't necessarily what's happening on the inside. So disappointing. We we do appreciate all of your efforts and time. I'm not in favor of this budget, but I I think it's time to move it off to the Finance Committee, unless you have anything else to add, or Mary or Anthony have any further questions.
I just have one thing. Sue, thank you for that briefing. I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you and Bill have done with the union. I guess the only thing that I'd add to that is there could be significant impact to the teachers. If if the staff count is reduced, then I mean, the teachers will have students in their classroom. There will be more work for the teachers. They'll see a colleague or a colleague that they've worked with won't be there any longer, so there may be significant impact.
That's part of Mark's presentation on those options and what we what the, you know, the options of how we can realize those cuts and how do we get to that bottom line. And, you know, Denise, as you just stated, that you don't know what the, you know, casualties of COVID is until you speak with people in the town And, you know, Denise, as you just stated, that you don't know what the, you know, casualties of COVID is until you speak with people in the town living it ourselves personally, because we all live here. But anticipation right now is is when these kids start back to school, we're going to hear and see what's going to happen now with these kids in real time. It's not going to be over a screen anymore. We're so excited for that. We can't wait. But with that comes the expectant, you know, the expectancy of there's a lot of there's a lot of damage that COVID has done with social anxiety now coming back to school. I mean, all of the things.
Yeah.
Part of the reason why Mark had said production and teaching staff. Yeah, the teachers will feel it, but they've been getting paid throughout this whole, you know, nightmare and the ones that are suffering every step of the way. So now if we're forced to teaching staff and now, you know, fifteen kids in a classroom now turns into twenty five, who's really the ones that are suffering now? So made the presentation like that for the real, like the real time with real life effects on these kids.
Yeah. I give a lot of credit to the, you know, to the teachers and the faculty for being creative with the online learning and everything. But and not to diminish the teachers, but I really give a lot of credit to these parents who were at home teaching their, teaching their children because they had no choice, simultaneously knowing that they would normally be working and bringing in income and there is no money there. They are at home teaching their children, knowing I should be at work. I want to be at work. I understand school is not daycare. We all know that, but as a parent, when my kids were in school, it saved me some money on daycare. So now these parents, and there may not be a job for them to go back to. So, you know, we know this isn't the opportunity for me to putting our west, put our West Bridgewater parents on a pedestal, but I am. So and I hate to be short, but we're at eight o'clock. We really want to.
One thing. The only thing is, and I mean no disrespect by putting in the two twenty-two amount and talking about the cuts. I think it's just our job to put forward the best budget for our kids and the best interest of our kids. And I just want it's never done with disrespect to the board. We just, we want to put forward what we think is best in the best interest of the kids.
Well, absolutely agree with you, Mark. We know that's what you're doing and we appreciate it. And we do need to move on. Anthony, Meredith, anything further?
Make a motion to pass the school department budget to the finance committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. We appreciate your time and all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're at eight o'clock.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll have the the department head for the seven twenty budgets come in. I'm here now.
Oh, okay.
So I will go through these. I will go through them fairly quick.
Okay.
The moderator will be level funded at five hundred eighty dollars. The ceiling rates and measures will be level funded at six thousand seventy-five dollars. The store contribution will be level funded at seventeen hundred fifty dollars. The benefits budget is up three percent, two hundred and nine thousand, chiefly because we have an eight percent increase in our retirement from Plum County. We will receive that every single year by state law or by county regulation until two thousand thirty-three. And then our insurance is, I'm going to level fund it because in the spirit of trying to keep our budgets low, I always have to carry more money in there in case we have claims in deductibles because we we have a low premium deductibles. But we haven't had any claims this year. So even though there's a minor increase, I'm going to keep it level funded and try to do what we can to keep our overall budget low.
Questions on those budgets?
No, I'll make a motion to pass them to the finance committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Yes. And just before we move off of budgets, David, I just want to take a step back to Southeastern Regional. Never heard of this Essar funding needing to be voted on. We did not take a vote to have it allocated West Bridgewater and thrown on us as a surprise. We didn't vote. I'm assuming we are reserving our rights to do so at a later time.
So Essar funding is new federal funding that has come out as a result of COVID. It's never existed before until six or eight months ago. Round one, West Bridgewater was was awarded sixty-seven thousand dollars. The money gets funded through the state, but it's federal money. So I'm understanding that that time was sixty-seven thousand dollars was provided from the state with federal funds directly to the school to augment or offset any of their deficits budgets pertaining to COVID. Round two now is two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And again, unbeknownst to me, heard this before, is that the selectmen would have the opportunity to be able to vote to say, look at, in essence, that's found money. Like they already have a budget. So you can keep twenty-five percent as needs as well and therefore we will retain up to seventy-five percent towards the town. That was the presentation from Southeast Regional. Again, I made a note. I'm going to do some research. I'm unaware. I can tell you in round three, that number is not going to be released yet, but in speaking to the undersecretary of DESI last week in our webinar, he has explained that they expect round two, potentially two times round three. That's half a million dollars. And again, I just always assumed that that money went straight to the school. This question, but I think it would have been a legitimate question in is that there's a six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar increase proposed. It's two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I think like Anthony said, I never expected any of it would be retained by the town. But in their budget, they're expecting to hire new people with that and to spend it. That means that their budget increase would actually go up nine hundred and thirteen thousand or almost seven percent. If you look at the Southeast Regional, what they're saying is that they're willing to augment their budget by lowering their budget by that amount. You know, we really should ask the school as to why they can't just lower it by the two forty instead of hiring people. We didn't get to ask that. Maybe we'll be asked to FinCom tomorrow night. But in any event, it's all new. That's why you've never heard it before. It's brand new stuff.
So we didn't lose anything at this point by not taking a vote on availing ourselves of the Essar money for the Southeastern Regional that he said we had to take a vote.
He did, but he also said that we will receive once they pass their formal budget.
Okay.
We will then receive a memo and at that point it'll spell out the vote.
Okay. So the time to take the vote hasn't come yet.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. All right. Good. Um. On TIF with development?
So there's an opportunity we have attempted and now that was not considered a legal mechanism, but apparently a TIF could be silly. It's quite frankly, it's the same thing. It's just structured a little bit different. Will require a state approval. I met with the state lady yesterday. So at this point, I would like to begin engaging. You already have a sitting TIF committee in a year. This is going to be really fast tracked because we have a lot to do in order to be able to get to that point for town meeting. You only have a couple of weeks to get through this. So I'm giving you guys notice that I'm going to just energize that TIF committee. And I think I understand the parameters of what the board would be looking for and try to negotiate a TIF agreement and bring it to the board.
Sounds good.
Approve the meeting minutes of January nineteenth. Is there a motion? All those in favor?
Kenan, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Except the meeting minutes of February third for review?
Both.
Your second? All those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Okay. Vote to approve and sign agreement for survey and design services for the River Street sidewalk and pedestrian plaza with Greenman Peterson.
So this is as you know, it's Jim Noyes. Running by the grant one hundred. It sounds like there is a vote that is on the floor. I will ask you to approve it in a month. Two thousand one hundred. To let you know that there is going to be a meeting with the Butters on March twenty-third at the town park at five thirty P M. They asked me to make that announcement so people can go there, including the selectmen one of them, and they will walk everybody through the actual project.
Okay, what's what's the date?
March twenty-third at the town park.
So I believe I heard a motion and a second.
You did.
All those in favor?
Kenan, yes.
Raise yes.
Anthony, are you trying to see how fast you could say your name? Like I'm waiting for you to stutter on your own name.
He's going fast forward. Okay. Vote to approve agreement between East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater mutual aid.
Three years ago, we entered into an agreement with the two bridge riders, East and West, for mutually between our building department. So this allows for whenever Mike goes on vacation, we still have to do inspections. The East Bridgewater inspector comes over to us. Same thing with plumbing, gas and electrical. And when they go on vacation, we will go over there to cover them during the spot inspection as well. There is no cost involved. This is just an agreement between both towns that we understand that because we are short-staffed a small town that we will offset each other if needed. Agreement effective this year through point twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Kenan, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Okay. Communications and reports from boards, commissions and town officials. We have Ben Smith.
Hello.
Hi, Ben.
How are you? I'm good. So as you know, presented probably around November that we are looking to upgrade our equipment in the town hall rooms for coverage of the meetings. Hopefully, you know, once the whole pandemic is over and people can be back in town hall. So it's probably going to be moved around till the summer, when we start doing these updates. When I presented this back in November, I had wanted to feel your options for if we went fully remote and we did our controls at our studio. There were some concerns, so we kind of scrapped that project. And now we're looking for just a kind of a simple upgrade to our production and switcher equipment in the town halls. Some updates will be that, well, one thing will be the the small meeting room right next door to the Anna Brown Conference Room. We'll get one of the wall-mounted cameras and that will feed into the switcher system that's next door in the Anna Brown Conference Room. We cover board of sessions there, but we also cover the finance committee moderator, the moderators finance committee meetings there. It's just good to have that last meeting room set up for any coverage that might happen there. The rooms downstairs will be connected to the fiber wall plate in the selectmen's room so that that can go out back to our studio. It won't be for control, but that will be how we will do if we want to go live or even if we want to just record in-house to our setup. Another thing that I've brought up with our vendors was trying to alleviate the wires that are on the floor, especially in the selectmen's room. I know when the room gets switched to a finance committee, a lot of those wires are tripping hazards. They're just kind of left all over the place. So we're looking to kind of go with a wireless setup. Wireless gooseneck mics, though, are pretty expensive for about was looking at about eight grand for about six of them. So we might be going with different microphones. I have two different quotes from two different vendors. One of them would have been boundary mics, kind of like what you have over there right now by you, Denise, so that you can, we can kind of get a better audio. Audio feed from the selectmen's room right now during these pool meets meetings. The other one were wireless handheld mics that would just be on stands. So we're looking at that right now, but I wanted to bring to the board to see if you guys had any suggestions on anything that you would like to see. We are trying to trying to close our footprint in these rooms so that we're trying to make things as small as possible so that we maybe we can add in a couple more chairs. But I just wanted to bring this to the board and see if you guys had any ideas before we start finalizing anything with our vendors.
So it sounds like you're still planning.
Ooh, you're echoing.
It might be me.
So it sounds like you're still planning to connect remotely. So you could turn the microphones and the cameras on and we wouldn't know it.
No, we're abandoning the remote setup where we would be not physically in the room. There will be someone physically in the room, whether myself, one of my staff or a volunteer or a student. What we're looking to do is just kind of simplify the room a little bit. In the selectmen's room, you know, in our corner, we're pretty, the equipment's old. You know, we're looking to, you know, have them buy it back, but it won't be a lot of money. Like I said, we're just seeing if you guys have any requests or anything that you would like to try to see, we're going to attach, we're going to connect the projector into the feed as well. So it'll be a nice clean projector feed as of right now, which the camera is pointing to the projector when we have productions. But we won't. And with one of our quotes, there is a software that's a lot like TeamViewer that you could set up remotely. And if, say, for example, there's a big snowstorm and someone just can't get to town hall, they could still remotely with a bunch of standstill shots that are just basically be a wide shot. They could do a scaled down remote version if someone, but that's on one of those occasions that someone just can't come at all.
Ben, the only thing I would mention is I noticed, I don't know, am I echoing? When we have the public in the meetings and they're speaking or asking questions and you watch the video afterwards, you really have a lot of trouble hearing what people are saying.
So I don't know if that just means a microphone you pass around or if there's any way of enhancing the video from that area, the audio around from that area.
So we did think of that. That was also a big thing that came into my head as well. And so what we're planning on is putting in a ceiling mic in the back that will just kind of hang in the back, but it'll be a better option than the microphones that, because there's no microphone right now in the back except for one by our booth. But that doesn't do a good job of picking up the whole room. And that'll be for every room. We're putting in for a ceiling mic that will go just above the ceiling. It'll hang just a little bit, but it'll be, it'll be as big as a lavalier mic, so about this big. And it'll just, it'll be a better option to pick up the audio that's coming from the back. Because I know people don't come up to the front that often anymore.
Right.
Right. And I suppose that's something you can turn off and on. So when they do want to speak to us and be heard, you can flip it on. And when they were just, you know, talking amongst themselves quietly, we're not picking up conversation.
Yeah, that'll be the operator's responsibility to make sure that's muted until someone in the back starts talking. There'll just be an extra thing that they have to remember to do. But as long as they're hearing, doing their job, it shouldn't be a problem. Price-wise, right now.
I think David has a question.
Yeah, because they talked about ceiling mics. Because you talked about the mics earlier and we know the tripping hazards in the wires. Why can't we just put in three or four ceiling mics throughout the entire room and not have any mics on the desk?
I will check. I will look into that. My response is that it's probably, they don't sound as great as just a standard mic does right up to your mouth. Most likely, the ceiling mics are probably going to be more ambient and pick up the whole room. Whereas, you know, a mic like the ones, the gooseneck mics or a handheld mic is a little bit more closer. One of the quotes we did get from one of our vendors that's on the cheaper side was recommending wireless boundary mics. So that's what Denise and you guys have in the selectmen room right now. That picks up more of the whole room in general. But those mics might be able to tweak a little bit so they can just be between two people in the room. But I will ask a question to our vendors.
We may want to mute them ourselves, though, David. If the ones currently, we can hit the mute button if we don't want you to pick up our sound.
Yeah, that's actually a very funny. That's, that's true. And I was going to say, to piggyback on what Marty mentioned earlier, is there any way that there can be an indicator light or some type of sound indicators that I'll wait? If the speakers are on while we're in here, we know that somebody has put the speakers on.
So you want an indicator light to know when the audio is on or?
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be important, especially if you'll be able to switch it on and off from the radio like you, I assume, right?
No, we're gonna, we've scrapped the whole remote setup. So now, so there is an, I think I did say there is an option for a soft, that a software that one of our vendors recommended for if that happens where. for if that happens where nobody can be there, but it would be, we would probably need the assistance of, uh, the town admin assistant to try to, to at least power it all up and get it set up for us, but those are ones from really, um, you know, last minute, those are like if nobody was around, which really isn't, I don't see happening. Um, this would be, you know, there would be an operator in the, in the town rooms, just like it always is. We're just looking for a simple upgrade to all that rooms, I know when we came to you guys in November, that was one of the big project ideas we had was to go fully, be a fully remote, um, from town hall, working in the studios that we could stay in. Um, but there were a lot of, you know, challenges that would have, that would have faced, including coming back into the school and possibly hitting the school's firewall, which sometimes runs an issue with our servers. Um, if, say, for example, Ed Sorrow updates that firewall and we're not informed about it, you know, imagine powering everything up, but we're not getting any big video signals, because that feed isn't coming, that feed is now hitting a new security block that we weren't aware of. Usually we can get around those or we fix it, but it's, sometimes it takes a couple hours and then we have to talk with our, um, um, I T department to help us with that, so there will still be someone there, somebody will power it up every night and, you know, power it down. Um, the file, the video files, and if the selectman wants to go live, that is an option, it's an option now, um, from that room. But those will still be available, but there will be someone here to make sure things are powered up, good to go, monitoring it all, um, yes.
Alright, sounds good.
Sounds good Ben, thank you.
And, um, just the prices, we're looking, it's, the range, it's ranging between forty eight thousand to sixty four thousand, um, the lower end is if we can, um, get a buyback on our old equipment, but it's, like I said, it's old, so there probably won't be a lot, much money coming out of that. But, uh, that's about it.
So this go through the cap logic to any of that?
No, because, um, he funds, I assume that you fund this through, through.
This is funded through the Comcast cable, and this is from the hundred and twenty five thousand from Comcast from the upfront capital, normally our last, uh, contract, it was, um, broken up over, I think, every fi- uh, four, five years. Uh, we would get a bump for capitals, but in this contract, we got it upfront, which was nice, um, mainly for these upgrades that we expected, um. You know, this, a lot of this equipment is still pretty circa two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, um, and there's been a lot of big upgrades with, uh, video quality, um, with just, you know, a lot more, um, technology with cameras, with the mics. So it's, I think it's time, and I think with this upgrade, it'll be beneficial for all of the town and us.
Thank you Ben, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move on to the zoning board of appeals, special permit, digital message board, Warwick Industrial Pastors at two fifty five Pleasant Street.
Yeah, so this is on Pleasant Street, if you, um, if you were going down Pleasant Street, coming from, say, Route one oh six, it's down the one on eleven, five, I did include a map so we could see where this building is. It's in a commercial zone, it's a commercial building, they're gonna be looking to add, yeah, you'll see, there's, there's the building there, um, and they're going to be looking to add a eight by twelve digital message board, which is allowed according to our zoning, but through a special permit in front of the Z B A.
So what, what building is this, that newer building, the blue one?
That's exactly.
Right next to, I forget the name, cause, oh, I can't think of a name on the front of the building, but it's the newer building.
It is the newer building.
Okay. So it's a pretty big sign, right?
Well, eight by twelve, uh, that's what's allowed, um, so, I mean, maybe they go even a little bit smaller, but that is the maximum allowed, it would be a digital board sign, uh, you know, some, I assume some will, like what the school has at the, at the school, the top of one oh six.
There, there's a, isn't there a two family condo, well, two family unit right to the right of that building?
So if we go to the, the area.
And then a house across the street?
Um, so, um, are we gonna zoom out a little bit?
Zoom out? Is the building, is the house next door?
So, uh, directly across, um, the blue building, this is two fifty five Pleasant Street next to that first building.
Yeah, that's.
Our Google Maps actually runs the next one down.
Mm-hmm.
So that one there is the building, that's the new blue one, um, directly across, it is all industrial and commercial. However, as you go down, um, towards, down Pleasant Street towards South Elm, there is a house on the corner, um, and then directly across from there, there are two houses there as well, side by side.
Do they get notified?
I would assume that they'd be, but it's through the Z B A, so I don't have first team knowledge, but I assume that there must be notice to a Butters and there'll be a hearing and a Z B A will have to take the vote and those, those people will be aware, be aware.
Does this, this need a vote or is this more of just a discussion?
This is just a discussion and it's like any, like a site plane review or any other, um, so it's, if you had any concerns, you know, sometimes when we talk about if there was construction, we're worried about sound, the dust and hours. Um, this is an easy construction, so they wouldn't really be worried about that, but if there was any other that you had, it is spelled out, it's, if our signs are highly regulated, they're sold the most. Um, so the zoning limits to the Z B A as to what they can do, um, but by all means, if you had some concerns, you know, we'll pass them along.
Yeah, I, I think, like I said, I think the only concern would be for those, the, the two family, or, or I think it's two condos, I think they're actually separate. Um, the condos and the house across the street, because, uh, even though it is, is that commercial or industrial there?
Commercial industrial.
It is commercial, okay. Yeah, that's, okay, um, that would be my, you know, would.
So what we can do is that we can certainly include the fact that we just, during the, during the permitting process, just to be sensitive to the residential neighbors. Um, there may be time limitations set by bylaw, but if not, I know, for example, our large bylaws in Route twenty four shut off either eleven and twelve o'clock at night. So if you wanted to say, if it's in the bylaw, you know, it's limited, but if it's not in the bylaw, there's no reason for it to be on from, say, midnight to six A M. Um, so if you wanted to include that as a condition, we could certainly do that, and that would, um, accommodate those residents that are there.
I believe it's hours that they are not operating, the sign has to be off.
I'm sorry, say again?
I believe it's hours that they are not operating, that the sign has to be off, correct? Do you know?
Yeah, that's exactly, so that's why I said, that's set by bylaw, but if it's not, then if you wanna make a suggestion for hours, it's fine.
Do you know what their hours of operation are? Uh, I mean, down in that, it, it's not like a restaurant where, I mean, I would think, you know, eight, eight o'clock?
Um.
I mean, if I was next door, I wouldn't wanna sign flash in till midnight.
Yeah, no, I agree, I mean, that's why, I mean, I was gonna suggest midnight to six A M, but if you wanted to go earlier, then, then.
Yeah, I'm not so sure what, what the purpose of the of the light is, the digital message board down there, uh, in that area, for that building. Like I said, for a restaurant, you know, or for the, the schools using it for announcements and information, um, might use it to announce some entertainment or venue. I'm not sure what a restaurant company would be using it for and why it would need to be passed, say, nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, so if you want, if, if the full board is in favor, we can certainly capture the following, we can say that in general, the board is not in favor of having a board in this area because we don't see what the point is, and there's not very a lot of advertising in that area, for example. Um, however, uh, if approved, we would ask that the light, the sign be shut off by nine P M at night and and not be turned back on until, say, six A M in the morning.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to that effect.
So a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Can I hear yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Okay. Uh, we have no correspondence from the public unless we have any emails or someone's uh, raise their hand for chat, no public comment period, no public comment period, town administrators report.
So thank you, so I will quickly go through this. Based on the conversation from last time, um, I put together a memo, I've informed the town hall staff that we're gonna target opening the town hall on April fifth. It is not an Eston Stone date, um, I still wanna see as to whether or not cases start to trend down or up. I will say, West Bridgewater remains one of the few communities in the South Shore in the red. And unfortunately, our numbers are actually trending in the wrong direction. Uh, you know, recall back in January at that peak, we were in the fifties, it came down. Four weeks ago, we were at six active cases, but since then, we went nine active cases, sixteen active cases a week ago, and currently today, we have twenty three active cases. So we are actually trending against the state and trending against the area. Um, I will say that in a handful of those situations, um, those cases are um, are increased because they are family related, so you have four or five people in one building, and obviously that, that increases the numbers. But I do feel it's good, it's a little bit difficult if our numbers continue over the next weeks, they continue to trend higher and higher, then I think that that's the right message to send to say, okay, now we gotta open the building. Now, I will say some of the other town halls have started to open, Bridgewater opened this week, um, East Bridgewater reopened, uh, two weeks ago. But again, their numbers are in the, much lower than ours and they're not in the red, we are, so I think we just have to be extra sensitive to that. Um, I will say that we had applied with the one, uh, we had a hope to be able to do vaccinations at the local level, we're prepared, we're ready, all those things. We've had this conversation, this point, we can't. However, the state did say that they were going to allow local municipalities to be able to do vaccinations for their senior housing complex, the one we have up on Esther Drive. So we were pretty excited, because the minimum dosage they come is in quantities of a hundred. What we did, again, trying to be proactive, is that we had the list from Esther Drive, thirty people signed up, that meant we had seventy leftover doses, and we already went to the C O A, we identified seventy people we were going to do it to, and then we received an email from the state, and they said they would only give us thirty, that even though it comes in batches of a hundred, they're gonna split our dosage with random, so when they get their hundred, they gotta break off thirty and literally drive them there. Um, so, uh, we received those in today in storage, and I believe it's later on this week, we will be administering the first shot to everybody at Esther Drive.
So it sounds like they learned a lesson from what happened with some other communities when they had the extra vaccines.
So, it's unfortunate because it just shows distinctly has no interest at all in municipalities being able to vaccination, so it is what it is. Um, in reference to vaccinations, new age criteria came out, was announced earlier today. Uh, it's starting on March twenty second, people that are sixty and over, right now we're the sixty five and over, but people who are sixty and over will now be able to get vaccinated. And if you're not in that age category, but you fall in a couple of other work-related categories, you are now eligible. So for example, grocery workers will now be eligible, so if you're twenty two and you work a market basket, those are people that I felt bad for by far the most throughout this whole entire situation. But what's nice to treat, to, um, discuss on our level is that D P W workers and public health workers are now going to be able to vaccinate regardless of age effective March twenty second. So I think that's a positive, because we certainly have people that work in town in both of those categories. On April fifth, it'll go to fifty five and over, and on April nineteenth, there will be the general public, which is, they're defining as sixteen years old and older, so only a couple of weeks away. Again, there's still, um, restrictions on what the quantity of vaccine is, but they, I checked today, you can actually make appointments in the future. So if you could get online, the site doesn't crash and all these other ifs, um, but you can actually go on, start making, um, appointments. Um, and the last thing is, again, just announced yesterday, is that you'll recall the vote by mail and the early voting that took place in November. Uh, the legislature just authorized and the governor signed that we're not going to start doing it at our local elections come people. I think it's a little unfair, those local elections literally turn out five to six hundred, seven hundred voters. Um, they're the lowest turnout count, it puts a lot more additional stress on our town court staff, but that's the new law. So, um, so that will be available, if people have questions about how to vote by mail or early voting, please reach out to the town clerks, um, town clerk's department, and I know they have information on their website. And, um, after COVID, it's just, uh, transportation, who will be here delivering their annual scholarships, um, uh, fundraising, and I signed up on that.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Can I hear yes?
Anderson, yes.
And raise yes. Thank you and good night.